Good evening. Today is Wednesday, June 9th, 2021. This is the regular Board of Education meeting for the East Aurora Union Preschool District. We are having this in person. It's going to be recorded and put on our website. Call the meeting in order and ask me to join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag. The pledge allegiance to the flag. They have a motion to enter executive session to discuss the collective bargaining with the East Aurora Administrators Association, matters related to a particular corporation, a matter related to pending litigation, a employment history of three particular employees, and the superintendent's annual evaluation.
Oh.
I'm going to go down in a second. I'm going to go to the vitriol by line. Discussion, all those very, 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 very. I'm hearing 4-0. Good evening, everyone. Today is June 9th, Wednesday. The East Aurora Union Preschool Board, regular Board of Education meeting. We are returning from executive session where the board discussed the collective bargaining with the East Aurora Administrators Association, matters related to a particular corporation, employment history of three particular employees, a matter related to pending litigation, and the superintendent's annual evaluation. I remind folks tonight that the meeting is in person, but there is a mask requirement, so masks are required at the meeting this evening. Any... There's one agenda change. Two agendas here this evening. One under item N, we're adding approval of the employment of the superintendent of schools. Under item N. No required... No items immediately requiring board action. And then we have superintendent's comments. Brian, you want to go first? The way of the superintendent's comment. All the comments or just the definition?
One thing that we did want to talk about is just the new dress code. The new dress code. We sent you the dress code, I think it was last week, to review. Travis and Matt Libra have been working on it to bring it up. There's new legislation that we need to be able to comply with. So they worked with Marty Smith to make the necessary adjustments. And that was sent to you. It's not something that we normally vote on, but it's just a piece of information so that you're aware of what the changes are. And if you had any questions or anything for that or Travis, they would be answered at this time.
If anybody's trying to point it, it's attached to the confidential. So if you open up the confidential, one is a link.
Again, there wasn't a lot of room for our interpretation. But Marty gives us very specific guidance based on a law of regulation.
Anyone have any thoughts? Moving on to board. So when will this be implemented? This will be implemented as of the new year. So if we have any questions, please touch me. Moving on to board presidents and board members' comments and committee reports. I'm just going to take a quick second to say thank you all. Tonight is my last official regular session. We have a few smaller meetings, but this is the last big one that I'll be serving as a board member on, serving as board president. You have all been a delight to work with. The board has been an amazing 15-year ride. So thank you all for your dedication to East Aurora and for just making my service on the board. So absolutely. Terry. I just wanted to thank anyone and everyone who's involved with Post-Hub and PR. It was absolutely amazing. The kids had a great time. The amount of time and effort that obviously was put into making our athletic field look as great as it did, as it has been at the Met's. There were so many people who donated gifts, gift cards, yes, food. It was just absolutely amazing. Thank you to everyone. I know George Jerome did an amazing job. She's spent a lot of time and effort. PGL, they were just... Again, they're not good enough apart. They were absolutely amazing. So for anyone who was involved, congratulations on a very successful meeting. And thank you for all your time and effort to make such a special meeting for our students. They really did it. I also would like to thank our two high school administrators. Anyone who did not get a chance to see their attire. They wore... I don't know.
It'll be... It will. It will.
But they wore some very interesting suits. I don't know where they got them from, but I'm sure many people would like to borrow them. So thank you both as well for everything you did to make such a special meeting for all of our students. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, to myself, thank you so much for your leadership. It's wonderful having you come us during these really challenging times. When I first joined the board, we were wonderful mentors, and we'll be most excited to have Joe joining us. He's been a wonderful leader.
Well, yesterday, I stole myself a drink, but I was saying much the same thing. I appreciated the fact that you wanted to be a school board member when you first joined, having been a student a few years earlier. And I thought, I'm... My students are succeeding in life, becoming lawyers and school board members. That's a wonderful thing. And you know, when you became vice president and then president, I was just proud of you and of what a good job you have done in those roles. I think your quality of leadership and your ability to help people to work together in a positive way is inspirational. So thank you for everything you've done.
I want to welcome tonight our soon-to-be newest board member, Joe Cassidy. We've asked Joe to join us at the board table. He won't be a voting member this evening, but in the past, when a new board member has been elected, we've asked him to sit at the board table to be a part of the conversation, not be a voting board member. But Joe, I ask you if you have any comments?
No, just thanks for the invitation to be up here with you all tonight. And I'm looking forward to serving with all you. And I regret that I won't get the chance to serve you in the future.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving on to administrators' comments. Where are you, folks? There you are. Mr. Brown, you can go stand.
On the... On the map? On the bottom, on the blacks.
Yeah, look at that. Hey, tonight is a very, very special night. And we have a lot of milestones and a lot of celebrations that are going on this evening. We have a very special evening for our top 10 seniors that we're going to celebrate in a few minutes and all very incredible accomplishments. We also are celebrating many illustrious careers as we honor our retirees that we're really going to miss, but we are honoring them tonight as well. However, there is one person we're going to honor that you did not see on the agenda. Mr. Russ, would you please come up here and stand next to the easel? He has no idea about this. What you didn't see on the agenda is tonight is another huge milestone. Tonight, we celebrate Mr. Russ in completing his 10th year as the superintendent of this fine district. 10 years as a superintendent is an accomplishment that happens very few times in districts, and it is something that we all feel is worth recognition. Throughout the past 10 years, Mr. Russ has led our district through many challenges, such as the gap elimination, many capital projects, and the stresses that go along with that, budget constraints, and obviously, it goes without saying, the past 15 months. But through these times, his leadership in our district never wavered. We continue to provide students with a top-notch education among the best in Western New York. Oftentimes, our district has been recognized for its success over the past few years. And I will be the first to tell you that Mr. Russ always points out everyone else's efforts. He often states how amazing our students are and how they come from incredibly supportive families. Our teachers and staff members are as dedicated and talented as any around. Also, our board members are incredibly supportive and caring. All of these things, very, very true. However, tonight, it's about recognizing the person who has led this district through the thick and thin. Mr. Russ deserves a great deal of this credit because his support and leadership has never wavered. Nobody's values are more aligned to the district than Mr. Russ's. And we could not be more proud than to call him our leader. So on behalf of the administrative team and the faculty and staff, I would like to present this to Brian. And at this time, we're going to ask him to open it up. And then I will explain what it is. Just rip it open. So what you see here is a plaque that will hang outside of the superintendent's office for the remaining history of this district. And on this plaque, we will find the names of all, every single one of them, superintendents to serve our district in the past and present. At this time, I would like to introduce a special guest of this year with us this evening is our EA town historian, Rob Gower. And he is here to share a few words about the meaning behind the names on this plaque.
Thank you very much. When Mr. Van Bredy called, emailed, it's been a while. This project took it some time, so he did not wait till the last minute. This has been prepared for a while. He was thinking that our office would have a nice handy-dandy list of previous superintendents of schools. And though we did not have that list, but as serendipitous as it was, we had been planning to come up with lists of community leaders, town supervisors, village mayors, superintendents of schools. And because, you know, we have other projects, we had put it on the back burner. So this lit the fire under us. However, it wasn't very easy because first, we had to go back and decide what the superintendent of schools is. And no offense, Mr. Russ, but for the first couple of decades, the school district didn't need a superintendent. So we had to make a couple of decisions. And I want to introduce... I'm the only staff member in the historian's office, and I'm part-time at that. So we rely very heavily on volunteers. And one of our volunteers, who my colleague, volunteer colleague in the office, also a proud alum of East Aurora, Lucas Dana, who helped out quite a bit on this project in researching it. So we had to decide. We made some editorial decisions. On the early days, there was no superintendent of schools. As a matter of fact, the early years of the district, 1883, it actually was only a part of the Village of East Aurora. And the first graduating class only had two graduates in it. And as the other small one-room schoolhouse districts joined Union School District 1, the district became larger and we needed a superintendent. So in the early days, we decided, Lucas and I made some editorial decisions on who to include as superintendent or who to include as the leader of the school district. So we decided, we came up with names of principals and dean of girls, the preceptress, who technically reported to the principal, but we found in our research probably did just as much work as the principal. So we included them on the list as well. And then in 1925, they changed, as the school district grew, they changed the title superintendent. So in addition to that decision to include the principals and the preceptress was the title of the dean of girls in the early days, we also included a couple of people who may not have had the title. And one of those people you will see on the list is Mabel E. Reed. She was the dean of girls. But after some controversy in the school district, the principal literally overnight left for another school district, and we were without a principal. And so she stepped up to do the job, but the school board did not give her the title because she was a woman. So we added her to the list. We made that decision because she ran the school district for half a school year. And in fact, at the graduation that year, they thanked her for getting the school district through. She was succeeded by Harry W. Mead, who became the first superintendent. He was the leader of the school when they changed the title with the help of her. So they said throughout her career, she helped. So the two of them led the district. I will warn you to maybe, Mr. Russ, stay away from exciting football games because unfortunately, Mr. Mead passed away of a heart attack at a high school... Tragically, at a high school football game. But he was a long time superintendent. So those of you who are interested in Mabel E. Reed, who might have passed by, there's a tablet at the middle school. You might have passed by without even thinking of it. When she passed away while serving in the position, they closed school to honor her for her work, and they have a tablet on the wall, I think near your office. So think of her and all the superintendents. But I want to thank you all for inviting us to be part of this project. It did take quite a bit of time. We wanted to make sure all the acting superintendents were included, and we went back to all the newspaper archives. Because believe it or not, there were some periods of time where a superintendent came and went, and they barely mentioned it in the newspaper. So we had to do a little digging. So we were proud to be part of that project, and we hope you enjoy it. And thank you again for making us part of this. We really enjoyed it.
Well, thank you very much. Wonderful surprise. Feel very honored and grateful. predecessors. Is that a high bar? Or you know, standard in our school district? That has been near the top for many, many decades. And so coming into Board 30th East Aurora, it's been great. I came in as a principal, moved on to the directorship, and was lucky enough to become the superintendent. The last 10 years have been absolutely fantastic. It was work, as Matt was saying, with just the best kids you could ask for, wonderful families, great crew of teachers and administrators, and a wonderful Board of Education. I really consider myself to be the luckiest superintendent of Western New York. I want to honor state. Great place to be, and I'm very honored, as I said, this recognition, and I think it's going to look great, maybe somewhere near my office. So thank you very much, Joe. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Any other administrators this evening? No, let me go live. No, right here too.
Just have a few fun end-of-the-year activities that our student services is taking in. We're... They obviously weren't able to go on any field trips last year. We were not able to go anywhere this year, but we're bringing a lot of activities for grade level, or groups of grade level. So I just wanted to go through a few of those. Jesse, I'll email it to you later. Okay. So our kindergarteners participated in a farm field day last Friday. We had some different farm animals out on our front lawn. The kindergarteners have to go through and pet down and murder out with the animals. They're also still continuing their project now. Next week with some outdoor theme activities stationed. We have Glenn Fulton coming next week for our kindergarten, first and second graders. He's going to perform two different shows for them. We have our field day this Friday, which the PTO is helping transfer one of the stations this year for their one EA day. We have four stations set up on Friday. The weather looks great, and we're all looking forward to that. Today, our fourth grader came up to the middle school for Buddy Day. They toured the building, and we had eighth graders come with them. And July group was just there. They were excited to be welcomed to the middle school. Beaver Meadow is coming out to Parkdale next week for second grade. They're incorporating a Beaver Meadow station into a series of outdoor theme stations. A Floramar is coming to Parkdale for a nugget and a series of stations for our third graders. Nickel City Reptiles are coming June 18th for our first grade. Our kindergarten and our fourth graders have gone over to the Miller's Fillmore House in small groups over the last couple of weeks. Our third and fourth graders have gone to Knox to have class picnic these last couple of weeks into next week. We have... Our fourth graders are going over to Beaver Rock either next week, I believe, for a moving out of the snack over there. The seniors are coming up next Wednesday to do a senior walk outdoors for all of our students. And we are having... Our PTO usually has a big setup to summer. It's a night event, and it's very popular, but since we're unable to have that this year, they're planning a special setup to summer for the students during recess on the very last day of school. They're going to have a resource on steroids, a recess on steroids. So this is bounce houses, an ice cream truck, games, in addition to the playgrounds and the toys they have out there to move. So we're going to look forward to that on the last day of school. And then of course, our fourth graders, we're having our moving out ceremony. We have said that we're having a three-year-old in person the last week of school. So we're really trying to go out with a bang here this year and try to make it as fun and memorable as possible for the kids. So yeah, very busy. Definitely hope. Yeah, yeah.
Fun doesn't stop at fourth grade. So the fifth graders continuing up here. A couple of events in middle school, the fifth graders are going to be doing walking field trips over to Sinking Pond. They're going to have a little bit of the science theme to that, do some exploring around the area over there. Our seventh and eighth graders are going to do kind of a non-traditional day, a field day over at Hamlet Park. So they're going to take some time to walk over there and kind of recreate what a traditional field day might be like on a little bit of a smaller scale. And then our eighth graders next Wednesday are going to be going to Camps Canopisian. So we're doing this in lieu of the eighth grade ceremony. And Mr. Brown and the teachers at the middle school are kind of designing this to really focus on the kids and what they like. We know all the kids in East Aurora love Camps Canopisian. So big thanks to the East Aurora Boys and Girls Club staff who will be working that day to provide the camp, the council, I'm saying that right, the camp council. They'll be doing boating activities, hiking, ropes courses, everything they have out there the kids are going to be able to experience. So it'll be a nice day for them. And the PTO is providing lunch for the kids when they're out there as well. So it'll be a nice little gathering for the kids. They're doing half a group at a time. So some small gatherings with their friends to kind of wrap up the year for eighth graders.
Thank you.
I'm bored of that. Sorry. So just two things. Mr. Libra, I could explain a few of them. Also, Friday, our PTO is providing hot dogs, chips, and a little something treat for all the students in the school. So we'll be grilling hot dogs on Friday, and our student council has rented a DJ. So all of the students will eat outside in the field, pickleball area, kind of picnic style during the lunch period. So we're very excited about that. And the other thing I just wanted to mention was our LEAP. As you all know about our eighth grade, what's formerly called the Honors Experience, now we call it LEAP. They did have their campus go on the defense last week. It was different this year. Obviously, we didn't do it in Knox mansion. We're hoping to get that back to that next year. But they were able to set up their passion projects and did a little display of their passion projects in the hallways. And the audience this year was students. So we had all the students come through during either study halls or band and some different times throughout the day. So all the students had the opportunity to see these passion projects. And it was really incredible to see these eighth grade students talking with some of the younger students and explaining their projects. And the one thing that I found to be really interesting was the number of students really focused on social, emotional, mental health and awareness and, you know, different things like that. It was really cool to see their passion, you know, towards some of those things that we've all been talking about and working on over the past several years. So it was really well done there. That's all. Thank you.
Can I just make a comment? I'm thinking over again, just want to thank you and Mr. Jung and Amy.
Mark.
I'd like to thank Terry and Mr. Mark for doing a great job and keeping that going forward. It's such an important part of our curriculum, and it's expanded, and there's so many kids who are interested, and the projects were really impressive. Even though they had to do it in a different way, and we didn't have the opportunity to do it, we did actually two years ago. Hopefully next year we will because it's so workable. And I'm always so impressed with the caliber and quality of the work and the interest and passion, as Mr. Brown often says, that they have in doing it. So it's just such a great experience. So thank you for attending that for it, even though it's a little...
Brian. Remind me, when you did this at Knox, did all the students get the opportunity to go up and see the prom? Or was it more just the parents and the community? Because I remember the community was invited. Because it sounds... I guess my point is, it sounds like a wonderful chance for the school because it had to be done differently this year. What a wonderful opportunity for all the other students to be able to see the prom. That's a good theory.
Yeah, but when we headed to Knox, it was an evening. It was more of a portal evening. So we sent actual invitations to all the parents and to the seventh graders who were thinking about doing the evening following here. So no, it wasn't necessarily for the entire student body. So it was really neat to give them that opportunity this year.
Yeah, I mean, it's something that's great for kids. Keep their eyes going forward. It's a different way to introduce the...
Watch for that, right? Really good point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown. Mr. Ross, the beautiful plaque that you're honored to bid was with everybody's fine men here. Our technology teachers, Mr. Craig, Mr. Wall, took the vision that Mr. Van Bredy walked them through and maybe replicated that vision in an incredibly professional way using all of the technologies the board has supported and the educational bodies has supported to put into hands our students. So I love it. We also had a lot of fun the last couple days texting Mr. Van Bredy saying that it was getting ready. Just a couple of things. I want to piggyback on what Mrs. Boyer said in thanking specifically the PTO and Karen Shendlich and Brad Proda for helping with, not only post-prom, but prom as well, leading up to that. Their leadership and teamwork, they just couldn't ask for anything more. Similarly, our senior class advisor, Denise Green, and our junior class advisor, Lindsay McAndrews, like McAndrews, I call them the dynamic duo. They just make things happen. So everything you see on the TV side is because of them. And I also have to thank our consigliere staff, Scott, Claire, and Tom Spum. They did everything that everyone asked them to do and more, and did it with a smile and always ended those conversations with what else do you mean? So they are just two incredible, incredible leaders in our school. And I want to thank Joe Farrar and Travis Moore, who kept nudging me to be awake until 2:30 Friday night. So thank you. So Travis and I have been running around. I apologize for the short sleeves. We have a music concert tonight. We actually have four music concerts tonight going on in the back parking lot and also in our auditorium. And we talked about all the things that we've done differently this year and some things And, uh, we talked about all the things that we've done differently this year and some things that may continue as traditions. And it was a beautiful night and the music sounded incredible, uh, and such talented kids and, and directors. Uh, so I, I apologize that that was going on the same day. We looked at the athletic calendar and this was the only day that didn't have conflict. Uh, so I appreciate you coming up to the high schools tonight and having a meeting. And then lastly, our seniors, um, we are in celebration mode. So, um, after prom, we moved on to, as the sign said, uh, next Wednesday heading to Parkdale to have, uh, a lunch, to have some, we're calling the, um, team survivor activities. We're gonna have groups of kids competing against each other. We're not sure what we're competing for yet, but we'll have something. Uh, and then the senior walk past the Parkdale students and their teachers. Following Monday, we're gonna be what we did last year. We're gonna have a professional photographer and we'll have the stage set up to look like graduation. We'll have a new 2021 sign, they thought, again, these two guys have been over here. And, uh, we'll be doing that from noon until nine o'clock at night next Monday. And if it be more time, we'll do it on Tuesday as well. And then our graduation invited committee, some of our members are here tonight, has been working hard to create a brand new appearance of graduation that will take place on Saturday at the 26th at 10 a.m. up on the stadium field. So, um, we are, uh, I'm gonna enroll the high school shareholders.
I just want to comment on, on the prom. Um, I think, again, uh, Mrs. Green and Mrs. McAndrews, uh, they also coordinated our, uh, our, our students' opportunities to get out in the community and do the community service. Uh, then it came through with prom, an enormous, enormous amount of planning, um, far greater than any typical prom. Like you said, usually I just write a check and, and everybody takes care of things. But this time they had to do all the setup, um, all the food, all the catering, all the activities. Um, Mrs. Proda, again, just, just really, just like, just doing an incredible job. It, we had a table of gifts as long as this, from one wall to the other, uh, for the kids. Everybody took probably multiple things away with them, gift cards, all kinds of stuff. Uh, the lighting, the, you know, everything that, uh, that happened that day was really special. And, um, it's really challenging and really difficult. But I think what it does tell us, even like community service, that there are many good things that have come out of having to deal with these very difficult situations. And, uh, they certainly made the best of it. The kids were having an absolute blast. Just so many different activities for them to do and food they actually liked to eat. There's lots of that and that's not necessarily like the food at prom, but they really loved the food that they selected. And so, uh, it was just a really special night. Thanks to Phil and Travis for, for kind of leading that charge. And it's, uh, incredibly time consuming, uh, and it just went off very, very well. It's a great night.
Mary's Travis.
Here.
There you are. Did you have any?
He's got Phil. I think he's still in and he got been rocking and rolling with lots of activities and things and it's been a joy. So go watch Travis tonight.
Thank you. This is Maranakio. Any other, any other administrator who wants to address the board this evening?
Just very quickly, today is the, um, second dose of our COVID vaccine. Uh, 230 folks are getting their second dose, uh, down at the middle school, uh, as, as we speak. So just letting you know that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to visitors' prom. This is the time when the meeting, when a visitor can address the Board of Education. We are recording the meeting, so I would ask you to stand up where you're sitting, state your name and address for the, um, camera, and you can address the board. Anyone who wants to address the board, raise your hand.
Where did you say?
Right there.
Right there? I'm Carol Purpose. Hopeless Row. I'm just here to advocate for the, uh, dawn humkers who are eager to get back to swimming in the main street school pool. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. And Brian, you, uh, we had gotten a letter, um, from you earlier last, like after our last boarding last month. Um, and I know there are.
Anyone else?
Sorry?
Did you hear from anyone else?
I, yours are the only letter related to the dawn humkers we've received since, since the last meeting.
Okay.
Um, that's, but, but, thank you. We recognize your, you know, your goal to get back in. So.
Yeah.
Um, we're working on it.
Okay. Uh, we better see any students. Once in a while we see one little teacher.
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm working with the, uh, rec department. Uh, they're a top priority to real schools. Yeah, because right now the schools are close to outside, outside moves, but the rec department is at the top of the list.
We don't consider ourselves an outside group. We've been going there since that school built, sugar of the food. And we're only put under the rec department when somebody decided insurance needed.
Um, but, uh.
But all the guys, we're independent.
So we're working on it and I'm hoping that we'll be able to start that process in a year.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other visitor who wants to address the board this evening? How about? Can I hold this down a little bit?
Yep.
You just gotta say your name and I have to, uh, go.
Uh, Don Mona, this is a letter from my husband and I. We're at, um, 283 Greenwood Court in this little. And this is regarding unmasking the children and height of the children. So Dear Board of Education members, the weather has been turning much hotter, presenting our children with safe long masking conditions that are intolerable and unhealthy. For the sake of our children, do the right thing and protect them from the effects of this masking. For your sake, protect yourself and personal liability you assume by allowing unhealthy masking that leads to impairment in children. First, it is your responsibility for the New York State Department of Health and New York State Education Department, Department reopening guidance to exercise caution and flexibility if we require unsafe long masking for children. To quote the New York State Department of Health, page nine, responsible parties, tools, it needs to consider and address developmental appropriation, feasibility and ability to implement such, such masking policies in a safe, consistent manner. For page thirty-six of the New York State Education Department's guidance statement, face covering should not be placed on students where such covering would impair their health or mental health. Aware such covering would present a challenge, distraction, or obstruction to educational services and instruction. We urge you to follow this state guidance based on reason, let the bill. We remind you that there is no science to support masking children. We are not scientists, nor are we medical professionals. Neither are you without us. But we have researched the uncensored real science, and I hope you have too. As we know how prolonged masking affects our children, you can easily move the filthy masks every day. We hear the complaints of discomfort and headache. We've seen their skin irritation and fear of the world. We contend with their nosebleeds. We watch as the fear and hate have become pronounced. Shortly after Germany opened schools last fall, a prominent university opened a registry for parents on mask issues. Physical, emotional, and learning impairments were reported by over twenty thousand, now sixty-eight percent of parents. The average time of mask wearing in those schools during moderate weather for harsh days was four and a half hours. Our children are constrained by masks under more prolonged conditions and have been struggling with breathing in increasingly higher temperature. Yet the German data shows the same impairments we are seeing in our children. Closer to home, a March tenth, twenty twenty-one summary meeting. Summary of data and infant neurologists published by the American Institute for Economic Research indicates that masking of children can harm children's cognitive and emotional development and suppress the natural immune system. There is no denying that historical medical data, medical data, unmasking during the Spanish Flu. The California Department of Health study from nineteen nineteen showed no difference in deaths in Boston, which mandated public mask wearing and Boston, which did not, even worse. The National Institution of Health confirmed the most deaths during the flu outbreak were due to bacterial infections, not the flu, during the mask wearing mandate. A recent new self-qualied study of blocked mask wearing for one-monthed hospital workers found bacterial infections to be much higher in masked workers than non-masked. And despite the media vet checker attempt to hide the truth, here is the Journal of Infections that needs this article, how to co-authored in two thousand and eight, that says bacterial infection was the predominant cause of death during the last pandemic. Finally, Americans are now becoming more aware of the option of, of now. This is video from written order. We cite the Dear Sylvia email in which he advised against mask wearing as ineffective. Masks are indeed ineffective in protecting from the virus. Worse, masks can enhance bacterial infection. Alarmingly, masks are harming children with physical, psychological, cognitive, and learning impairments while suppressing their natural immunity. Ironically, the question of masking is moot in an environment where the virus is disappearing if children have proven to be the segment of our population least affected by transmission, infection, or orbiting. You have the authority you need from the Department of Health and State Education Department to exercise good judgment in the ramping issue. Stop the abuse of our children that is causing them discomfort and impairment. The consequences of the current ill-advised policy that fails to give students and parents medical choice rests rarely on your shoulders. You have personal culpability by ignoring us and the real science. A mend your policy immediately to be reasonable, flexible, humane, and protective of children. Thank you.
There anyone else who wanted to address the board this evening?
I mean, Paul, can we do pretty elaborate? I have a fourth grade and eighth grade. Did we have microphones at the last reading?
You.
I believe we did. There's one up here. Uh.
All right.
Um, now I actually project very well, but I don't have a mask on. Um, I'm gonna give you a super quick history of, of my, my journey through this pandemic so that you don't lump me in with, um, you know, all of these crazy people. Um, I started off being afraid. I didn't know, I felt it all, oh, I wouldn't let my kids see, see their friends, but let their outdoors. We, I don't know, I didn't have friends over and we didn't go to friends' houses unless you could hang out outdoors. We didn't go to restaurants. I ordered my groceries for the Instagram. I did the town traditional thing on my holiday gatherings. I followed the rules. Only thing I never did is wear a mask when I'm outdoors. So I'm thrilled that that part of the past three years has finally lifted. Uh, because that's always been a problem. Um, when the district put out reopening plan, I was happy that I even chose a layer of mitigation approach. I felt comfortable and confident in that approach compared to that my kids could attend school because of that. And in the beginning, with my favorite work, I just throw them that they had. And I found it the silver lining where I grew. I did everything that I needed to do to be, you know, within the comfort. Telling you this because I know there are people out there, a big group of people holding unmask their kids' size, wearing shirts like mine, are crazy. In fact, though, run this back to when people who once followed all the rules like me to people that never wore masks in the same way. Why am I wearing this shirt now? Because while I was following the rules, I was also paying attention. Paying attention to all of the inconsistencies with our state and federal government, adult restrictions, alleged restrictions. Even some didn't say, but not, and others. Like allowing our kids to play sports, even though it wouldn't be for them to attend school full time. Allowing rooms, people sit next to each other around the restaurant table without masks, even though our kids couldn't sit within sixteen of each other with masks and flash, flash shields surrounding them. Allowing places like indoor trampoline and bounce house parks open before our kids are back in school full time. Places I consider to be german natives or pre-pandemic. None of that made sense to me, just like it don't make sense to keep our kids' masks at the back. Now, more than ever, kids are at greater risk of illness and death, even death, from wearing masks than they are from COVID. Now more than ever, it's probably like that all the way, all the way through. Right now, as of the end of last week, the rate of COVID infection in Erie County, all of Erie County, nineteen point four for one hundred thousand residents. And that rate is dropping every day. In East Aurora, less than five for one hundred thousand residents. There are less than five cases per one hundred thousand residents currently, and all of the towns surrounding us. I have, I have the list right here. The vaccination rate in East Aurora is seventy-one point six percent for fifteen-year-olds who are older. This took the, uh, the, our, the towns, um, natural to us, those rates are, are actually higher or maybe a couple percentage points lower. That magic number that Mo just said the other day, when we reached seventy percent? We're already practically over that in our lean community, when you, and, and even higher, when you take into account natural immunity. People that have had COVID, but they haven't had the vaccine, they have, they currently have natural immunity. And there have been some studies that, uh, that show that that immunity lasts, but it doesn't go away. And then there are people, why do you think some people don't get COVID? Why are some people exposed to COVID, but they don't get it? Because they already just have an inherent natural immunity. When you take into account all of those communities, we are at current immunity in our community and surrounding communities. That, in addition to the harm that can be caused to our children by wearing masks? Thank you, Don, for all of that science. That, in addition to all of that science, says we should drop masks immediately. Let the healing begin for these kids. Kids have a ninety-nine point seven percent survival rate. And that's, that's out of all of the kids that get COVID, of all of the kids that get COVID, ninety-nine point seven percent of them survive. What is? I'm good. It's close to COVID. Um, that's, that's, that's the kids that get COVID, not all kids get COVID. Some of them have that natural immunity. The CDC's own website states that children have a higher chance of dying from the flu than they do from COVID. So what is this all about? You're letting, you're, you're, you say you have to follow the state guidelines. How much longer are we going to watch all of these inconsistencies from our government handing down to us? Bullying our districts, keep following their rules instead of giving you back the power to do what you need to do, to keep your children safe. On the flip side, the fact that, so, for masks, there's nothing that masks could protect our kids from. On the flip side, they are harming our kids, as Don pointed out. Um, did you mention the, the, the fact that, I don't, you need to be able to see their teacher faces. You need to be able to see their friend faces so that they can learn how a form works, so that they can learn about emotional, um, expression. And asking our kids, we have, we had to tell our kids that the reason they had to wear these masks is to protect themselves. And in the beginning, it was just to protect, to protect others. That was, was protect yourself and others. So the longer we force residents to keep these masks on, the longer it's gonna take them to heal and recover from getting these masks off. I, you see, my own kids are afraid to not, to take their mask off when my husband and I tell them to take their masks off. And just let them start healing. Let them start getting back to normal. It's time. In this heat with horse, we have the added physical harm in addition to the psychological harm. OSHA, if you look at the OSHA, OSHA rules for workers in COVID, wearing masks, OSHA hammers home the risk of heat stress for the workers. And, and just, you tell people, anytime you need to take a mask break, you take a mask break because heat stress is, can be lethal. Our kids, you can tell them all day long, let, let us know when you need a mask break. How many kids are too shy to do that? How many kids, maybe they, maybe they raise their hand, maybe they speak through their mask, they don't. They're not, they're too shy to speak loudly enough to be heard. It might be a misunderstanding. They might be misunderstanding. Do you need a hearing? Do you want a mask break? They're too shy to say, I'm sorry, you didn't hear me, I need to take my mask off. And they're too terrified to take a mask break without permission. Hasn't happened yet? It's, we haven't had anybody leaving, leaving East Aurora yet, leaving the school in an ambulance yet? It's happened in Lancaster. This week, I know personally of at least five children who have left school for heat-related illness, and at least one of them left in an ambulance. I understand Parkdale had air conditioning and the high school had air conditioning. The little school, parts of it had air conditioning. So we're lucky, great. But it can still happen when the kids are going outside, coming back in, they've got a dirty sweaty mask. Even if they're now not wearing it anymore, it's in their pocket probably, right? Because you're making them put it on the second they walk through the door in the middle hallway. So that mask is where, it's in their pocket, getting sweaty. And dirty. And putting that back on, I have it right here. If you haven't seen it, um, I don't even know if this is the best pictures, the one offhand of this staff of pictures to me. If you would, I can put my mask back on and walk up the hand myself to you. It shows the growth of bacteria on reusable masks and disposable masks over six hours and then twelve hours. So, you know, our kids aren't wearing them for twelve hours. Um, but do you know that they're grabbing? I, I know for one, my kid is locked out, uh, out of the door and grabbed his dirty mask and said it's clean mask because he didn't put it in the right spot and I didn't catch it. Lately, this week, I started putting clean mask in a Ziploc bag in his backpack and telling him to remember to change his mask when he comes back in so that he has clean, dry mask to wear the second half of the day or whatever that portion of the day is. This is the same kid that won't change his underwear unless I remind him to help him change his underwear. I just, it's time to stand up to the whole community for my announcement. And you have over, school districts across the state have over eleven thousand people that will stand up behind you. And then if you link up with other districts and all stand up together, what's at stake in it? Thank you. Any other questions to address before this evening?
Sure.
Yes?
The Red Bull, eighty-three Elektra Road. I just want, I can't follow that, it's been really good. Um, I, I just want to emphasize, these kids, how much communication is going on between the kid, the student, and the teacher when there's a plexiglass, um, shield and a mask? I can't hear half the things that you all are saying, that you're adults, that you're little church wise kids, fourth grade kids, whatever. You know, they, you can't, the kids can't see the teacher's face, the teachers can't hear what the kids say unless they cackle and, you know, they don't, that one, they're doing, you know, very fun. But in an actual lesson, fine. So I just want to emphasize the community, the fact that these masks and, um, shields, shields are fine, the masks got to go. Okay, well, anyway, but anyway, I, I'm not a educator, but I know darn well that teachers can't hear or see what their kids are saying with the masks on. So anyway, thanks.
Hi, my name's Andrea, uh, from seven, eighty-four, Markand Drive. I have three precious little kiddos in the district, um, who are at Parkdale, um, eight-year-old, six-year-old, and I have a three-year-old at home as well. Um, I'm going to agree with the parents here, I think the masks are law overdue, um, to be removed from kids. At this point, we have the numbers that prove that children are not being overwhelmed by this virus, um, nor are they spreading this virus, um, that dictates this, this pandemic. Uh, but I, I just, um, I want to be brief, I just, I do have a couple of questions, um, for this district. I want to know, um, if you have been provided the, um, the science, the data, the numbers, the evidence, the studies to support, and I'm talking compelling studies, compelling numbers to support masking children, has the state provided you with this? Because it's been very convoluted for us parents, um, to know and to, to, to know what to believe in to, um, yeah. And so I want to know if the, the state has provided you with compelling evidence to continue to mask our kids. Um, and also I do want to know if this district does support parents in their rights to make decisions for their children? Or do you believe that it's up to the state to make decisions, help decisions for our kids? Thank you.
Any other visitor to address the board this evening?
Yeah. Mr. Robert Barberry, uh, twenty-eighty-three South Brook Street. Uh, just want to say, uh, it's impressive to talk with you yesterday, it's an hour. Uh, keep it brief, obviously a lot of information shared here, but just wanted to say we appreciate the support, uh, for straight, uh, and pressure the state to get this guidance changed. Appreciate that continued support again. Uh, thank you for Swift, uh, who've been on new guidance and, uh, requirements. Uh, and we appreciate your activity and the assistance possible. Thank you.
All right, we've had received a number of letters. Mr. Barberry, I think we received four emails from you, um, regarding masking. We received two from Ms. Emick and Brandon and Jamie Emick, one related to lunch sitting outside and two, and another related masks. Ms. Cole, we got your letter, email regarding masks. Um, we also received a couple of letters from Renee Moat, um, one-two-three regarding masks. Ms. Mona, your email regarding letters you brought to education. Um, and another letter from, um, this was interesting, from Becky O'Connor, which came in today about food service. I encourage you all to look at that because it talks about, um, um, the desire to move toward a self-operated food service program, but also, uh, how to get locally sourced food. Um, so, uh, you know, take a look at that one, that's very interesting. I can tell you that, um, you know, stick with the district as we move forward towards the reopening of schools. Masks are obviously an issue and, and we're taking our guidance from, um, you know, somebody said, we're not health experts and we're not edible professionals, and neither is your Board of Education or your superintendent. We have, um, followed the guidance of the New York State Department of Health and the State Education Department throughout the year. It has served East Aurora well. East Aurora did not have school spread. Um, bear with us, I'm optimistic through the fall that as the guidance changes and our community improves, that some of these restrictions that we have are going to be lifted. Um, I encourage all of you to send your data and your, um, research and your letters to the State Education Department, to the Department of Health, and, and I'm willing that, that guidance will change as things improve and as, um, science is looked at again and again and as we move forward. And optimistically, I'm looking that, that in the fall, we will see a much different East Aurora than we did at the start of last fall, or certainly than we see right now today. So thank you all for coming, thank you for your comments, and stick with us. Moving on to reports and discussion items. Ms. George, you are up for your business and financial report.
Right.
Oh, we, are they here now?
Yes.
We're good? All right, we are going to revert back to superintendent's comments because we have some celebrations this evening. I apologize if I forgot about that. Um, first up is the recognition of our top ten seniors.
Again, this is a very special board meeting. This is the year that we, this is the former board meeting where we celebrate a lot of accomplishments. Again, I'd like to thank the administrative team for presenting the presentation of the, uh, the plaque, it was really quite beautiful, and to our two tech teachers who, who made it possible, I'm really grateful, and to the client, I want to thank before that. Uh, but today, even more importantly, here we are, uh, celebrating our top ten seniors and as well as our retirees. Uh, and so we're going to turn it over to Mr. Roberts and Mr. Moore, who'll introduce our top ten seniors.
Ask them to join us. Thank you. All pure love is here. Thanks, everybody. I'll tell you, probably the best dressed top ten that we've ever had in this presentation. Mrs. O'Connor had a very good idea to allow our band, Jazz Band, to dress like Lion here tonight. It was a little warm, but it sounded amazing. So, um, it's an honor tonight to present our top ten seniors from the class of 2021. And, uh, Mr. Moore and I truly enjoyed, um, reading your bios, researching all the successes that you have, and looking forward to celebrating you tonight. And, uh, and that celebration will continue over the next couple of weeks, culminating with the graduation. Um, so, uh, without further ado, I'm going to have Kasha Kolinsky come stand to my right. And she is the daughter of Pavel and Anna Kolinsky, who are here tonight. So Kasha has been a shining star in all aspects of our fine arts program. You've probably watched her as a featured dancer, a pit member, a member of the concert in Jazz Band as we did tonight, and as a sax player, a very jealous of your talents for a long time. When not on stage, Kasha is an accomplished leader in numerous, numerous clubs, including president of the Outreach Club, co-president of the Donate Life Club, and she holds a special and unique state-level leadership position as the Secretary Lieutenant Governor of the King Club for the state of New York. Now, you might think that she's perfect, but I will tell you that she did shatter one of Mr. Swinich's last romances during a lab session. One of her most embarrassing moments, but we won't talk about it. Kasha is known as an intelligent, motivated, and well-respected student who has maintained her identity through the time with us, and we are proud of what she has accomplished. She plans to major in English and Education at Franciscan University in Steubenville, Ohio in the fall. So everyone, congratulations to Kasha.
All right, we're moving alphabetically through our list of top ten. So the next person is Kira Kapsic. Kira, come on up. Here's the daughter of Debbie and John Kapsic. Are you guys here? Yes, welcome and thanks for being here. Kira, throughout her time at East Aurora High School, has been a model of maturity, passion, and acumen. She is exceptionally multi-talented. She excelled in academics, athletics, and extracurriculars. In her classes, her course load and academic achievement have been exemplary in all of her four years, and she finished as our class's all salutatory. She's taken advanced placement courses in science, English, and math, always challenging herself to take the most rigorous classes available. In the midst of such a rigorous schedule, she maintained a well-rounded experience through her participation in career in finance, yearbook, and orchestra. We'll get to that wonderful concert tonight. Outside of class, her commitment to personal excellence has been evident in sports and extracurriculars. She was the captain of the soccer team and helped lead the team to the sectional championship. She was the president of the student government this year. She says the most important thing she learned from her time at, at East Aurora High School was to surround herself with the right people, to focus on the important things, and to be present. After graduating, she plans to attend McGill University in Montreal with the hope of becoming a doctor and ultimately using her knowledge to help others, either in a global health or women's health. Here it is.
Next, I'd like to introduce you Joseph or Jack Meyer. Everyone look better?
I appreciate it.
You've been rocking a Coca-Cola tie over there.
It's the historic tie of the Jazz Band.
So Jack is the son of Michael and Katie Meyer, and Jack is a focused and hardworking student who leads by example and always finds time to support his classmates along the way. He is an AP scholar with distinction, a national merit scholar, a college board, rural and small-town scholar, and recipient of the Rensselaer Medal of Honor. Another statement here, Jack is an accomplished musician. He's participated in NISM and ECMEA ten times, performed in ECMEA in area all-state bands numerous times, and most recently was selected to perform in the New York State Conference All-Star Band, and I believe first chair of percussion.
Uh, second.
Same. Top, top two in the state, top, right? But I must say, most impressively, he's played alongside Mr. Moore in this year's In his free time, he's a member of the National Honor Society Chess Club, Rocket Club, Adventure Club, the unofficial weightlifting club, STEAM Program Band, Jazz Band, School Musical, and the Lottis Club. One skill that I was unaware Jack possessed until recently is he's quite an ultimate rugby player as well. The sky is the limit for Jack, and we look forward to hearing of his successes. He plans to study engineering in a small, private New England university named Harvard. Jack, you ready?
Next up is Elliot Nagy. Elliot is the son of Michelle and Peter. Throughout his experience at East Aurora High School, he has been the picture of commitment and gratitude. He was a dedicated member of the orchestra, and he also participated in Model UN in swimming, which he described as his favorite activity in high school. As a student, he took a diverse course load with a focus on science and technology. He enrolled in nearly every class offered by the technology department, from principles to computer, uh, computer science, to engineering design and development, to computer-aided design. And he has excelled in each of these courses. However, as he reflected on his experiences, he shared that AP US History would be one of the classes he would remember most. He said that that class forced him to slow down, to pay attention to the fine details, and to carefully look over all his work for submission. This attention to detail will likely serve him well after graduation, and he moves on to RIT to pursue a degree computer engineer.
And then next up, it's an honor to introduce Nolan Rogers. Nolan is the son of Ty and Amy Rogers. Nolan is outstanding in every possible way. He has successfully achieved an excellent balance of academically challenging coursework, extracurricular activities, and in the end, has developed into a student and person that we are all proud to recognize. As a graduate of our STEAM program and having completed numerous AP courses, Nolan is prepared for the future. He has found a wonderful balance of his academics and has developed into a fine leader on both our baseball team and our trap shooting club. Trap shooting on Monday nights with his buddies and baseball victories, a lot of victories for both of them, are clearly the highlight of his high school experience. As the son of an EA teacher, and ironically, a great school and high school classmate of mine, Nolan also gives a shout out to the effort of his teachers and coaches and their dedication in making him the best that he can be. In the fall, Nolan will study mechanical- In the fall, Nolan will study mechanical engineering at the University of Buffalo. Proud to honor Nolan Rodgers.
Next up is Emma Thompson. Emma is the daughter of Mary and Jerry Thompson. Emma has excelled in both academics and athletics, and has also been a member of a number of student organizations. She took an incredibly rigorous course load with eight AP courses, including AP courses in all four content areas. She was the captain of her tennis team and described that experience as one of her favorites in high school. Her participation in student clubs included Key Club, Donate Life, AFS, and National Honor Society. As she now reaches the end of high school, she describes computer science with Mr. Wall as her favorite class. She set aside her overall problem-solving skills and gave her a picture of what she might want to do with her future. She plans to get a degree in computer science after she graduates and looks forward to the day when she has found a good job in the field and has purchased her own house in Harlem.
All right, Charles Langland. No bad things here. Charlie is the son of Les and Allison Langland. Charles would say, or Charlie would say, that his four years at East Aurora High School have been an amazing journey both in and out of school. I would say a brilliantly successful journey, and we are all so proud. Charlie is known to be highly motivated, respectful, and always positive. Teachers describe him as a diligent, curious, and also creative in thought. He has been consistent in his pursuit of challenging coursework and balanced with opportunities to contribute outside of the classroom as well. He has successfully completed numerous AP courses, participated in Model UN, and has been a member of our concert and jazz bands. Charlie was a 2021 National Merit finalist, which makes him one of only 15,000 students in the nation to have scored in the top 1% on the PSAT. When not at school, swimming has been both a priority and a passion. He's been a leader both on the pool or in the pool and on the deck. And his experiences with the team have created lasting friendships and incredible memories. Next fall, Charlie will swim and study chemistry at Geneseo. Ladies and gentlemen, I am proud to introduce the valedictorian of the class of 2021, Charles Langland.
All right, now I'd like to call John Lang. John is the son of Jerry and Amy Lynn, and he has excelled in school, completing a variety of very difficult courses and participating in a number of extracurricular activities. His schedule, when I looked at it, consisted of 18, or sorry, 11 AP examinations, including four in your junior and six as a senior. That was, that's, that's a, that's a schedule. John, John also challenged himself by taking a number of additional classes that stretched his perspective, including Chinese. Chinese, that is amazing. World culture. World cultures, global art, and global literature. One of John's favorite memories from high school was the international studies trip to Peru, where he remembers how alpacas greedily roamed the valley. He also fondly remembers his participation in the High School Musical and the sense of connection that he developed with other members of the cast. He reflected that no matter whether you were ensemble, a dancer, or lead, your role is vital to the show. John truly was an essential, a vital part of our community at East Aurora, and he will be an essential member at his new community, RIT, where he will study computer science.
So next up, we're going to continue with our celebration today with our retirees. And so after we do the retirees, then we're going to have tape, so please stick around. And I'll just call them up one at a time. And our first up is Nina Hart. Okay, so it is my pleasure to introduce Nina Hart, fabulous fifth-grade teacher. And I just have a few things that I'd like to go over about Nina. Nina was hired in September of 1992. That's just 29 years ago, but that is 29 years of dedication to the students, parents, faculty, staff members, and the community of East Aurora. Nina has spent time at Main Street Elementary for 16 years, one year at Bartell, and then the last 12 at the East Aurora Middle School. She has taught grades two, four, six, and most recently, fifth grade. Through the past 29 years, Nina has far exceeded her role as a teacher. She has been a mentor for 10 years, curriculum coordinator in ELA for a total of 16 years, summer school teacher for six years, and drama club advisor with the famous middle school talent show for nine years. As you can see, she's done just about everything. When many people describe Nina, they describe her as a kind heart that loves her job and loves her students. Nina has shared many passions with her students and colleagues over the past several years, including a few of the following. Her passion for writing, the passion for literature, incredible planning skills. Read aloud books with figurative language, she excels in that. Her co-teachers and teammates adore her collaboration and friendship. Mechanical pencils. She loves mechanical pencils. Learning and implementing new technologies. She, to this day, is among the best of the best at new technologies. She spearheads the hospice flower sales, creates lifelong experiences such as the East Aurora trivia game that is still being used, I believe it's about two decades after it was made, almost. Yep, and they're using it at the high school right now. Her joy and excitement of the drama club and the talent show have provided some of the best entertainment that we have ever seen. Her ability to make the perfect quilt and bring her very own ground dog Fritz on Groundhog Day, and having the absolute best person handwriting that the human eye will ever see. While all these things were things that, I'm sorry, while all of these things were things that she was passionate about, what tops them all is her dedication to the students and families of East Aurora. She connects with each and every student on a personal level, getting to know them as individuals and individual learners. Because she knows the students so well, she excels in communicating with parents. I dare you, anyone, to find a teacher that has spent more hours on the phone with parents than Nina has. She always puts her students and her families first. It is an honor for me to be the one to thank Nina for her illustrious career and remind her of the legacy that she will leave behind forever in the halls of East Aurora Middle School and in the hearts of her students and her friends. On behalf of East Aurora Middle School, I would like to wish Nina, husband Keith, who is here, nothing but good health and happiness in retirement. We are hoping that she stays in touch, possibly even to the south, but we haven't gotten that far yet. But most importantly, that she enjoys life and each day. Next up is Deena Calusin.
Good evening and just like the people at Parkdale, if you know me. Adina has been a valued teacher aide at Parkdale for the last seven years. She made quite the career change from working at a CPA firm to becoming a teacher aide to elementary students. As you can imagine, the qualifications for each job are quite different. Well, that's with the exception of math class. As with many of the milestones we reach in life, we have the opportunity to look forward to all the possibilities that lie ahead and to look back at where we've come from and all that we've accomplished. These milestones can be bittersweet. Deena's friends, colleagues, and students that she has supported and guided will certainly miss her positive attitude and willingness to help and encourage everyone. Through the years, we have called upon Nina to work with students that are having a tough day, those that need encouragement to complete a difficult task, to support and help the classroom teacher and guests to fill in when we are sure a substitute. I've also seen Nina being an active participant and having fun doing gym activities with the students. Nina has stepped into all of these roles and many, many more with poise, grace, and humor. Nina has been told that she would be a great mentor to new teacher aides, and she has so much experience and a wealth of knowledge to share. This, coupled with her positive attitude, has made her a true asset at Parkdale. Recently, Nina sent me a list of suggestions that she would have for any new aide to Parkdale. So I picked out a couple of those, because she has lots of words of wisdom to give. First, to observe and listen, know what the teacher expects you to do, use the advice of teachers, be a team player, and to catch the student in doing something good, and to take the opportunity every day to make the difference in the life of a child. These were her words. She has proven that a kind word and encouragement go a long way. And so for all that you have contributed to Parkdale over the years, we'd like to say thank you, Deena. She's not here, she has dinner plans with her friends. Our congratulations on your retirement and best wishes for all the new adventures that lie ahead.
Number 24, stand please. Okay, Lynn Dager. Lynn was hired in September of 2000, that is 21 years of dedication to the students, parents, faculty, staff members, and the community of East Aurora. Lynn has been a valued member throughout the district, all over, including years in the middle school with us. But Lynn has also worked in all of our non-public schools, which she is currently doing, but she is serving students from all over the district. While many students think of Lynn Dager, they think of someone who is always there to help keep them safe and comfortable, all while showing incredible patience. A few years ago, at East Aurora Middle School, for sure she remembers, we faced a very challenging, challenging year in regards to students with medical conditions. Lynn always made sure that each and every student was cared for like they were her top priority, no matter how unique the situation was, and there were some unique situations. Oftentimes, she would respond through her walkie-talkie as she had half of her sandwich in her mouth, trying to grab a lunch, but no time for a lunch break, because Lynn was always bold in every direction. But no matter what, she always came to the call, and she always made the students and parents feel better. Some of the best times I personally ever had with Lynn was when she chaperoned two of our most fun trips ever that our Student Council took, to Washington DC, and then to the Disney Youth Educational Series, which ended the last day of February 2020, a week before, or a week and a half. Little did we know, however, it didn't change. But Lynn was a trooper. She was incredible. And I will tell you, I'll never forget the picture of her face sitting next to me on the Tower of Terror. It's still on my phone, and I'll probably be forever. That's also where she learned the nickname 24, and she was a master at helping us make sure that we did not lose any of our students. Her flexibility and willingness to join us on these adventures really opened up, and this is the important thing, really opened up possibilities for students who would most likely have not gone. They would have chosen to stay behind because of some of the health concerns they had. But no matter what, we knew that these students were in the best hands, and she was the reason why we were able to provide them with a lifelong, remember, or memory of an incredible trip. On behalf of East Aurora Middle School, I would like to wish Lynn and her family nothing but good health and happiness in retirement and hope that she stays in touch. Next up is Joe Farrar. Joe Farrar has been with us for 17 years as our school resource officer, and in his capacity, he has worked with kids from the computer. And what is so important about his role is that he has done an exceptional job making connections with our kids. The value, and that's our goal in any district, is to help them through difficult times, difficult situations that they're having in class, difficult situations that they're having with friends. And no one has done that better than Joe. And now that he's retiring, we are in the process of trying to find somebody to replace him, and it's been a challenge, because the celebrations of what he does is what he is so good at. He is always willing to go above and beyond. Right now, for about the last eight years, nine years, nine years, he's been working part-time, but he never works part-time. Here he is tonight, helping us out. Of course, he's being honored, but he would be here anyway. He goes to many of our extracurricular activities, our football games, always doing whatever he can to reach out to the students to make sure that they're supported. And his role within our organization sometimes isn't necessarily noticed because he's taking care of things before they happen. As things start to build, Joe has always been there to intervene, and he's done so with a lot of grace and respect for those people who are involved. And so it's a personal loss for me, because I enjoyed working with him so much, and he's been such a valuable resource to all of us. So I just wanted to congratulate Joe for his dedicated service, and we still look forward to seeing him at football games.
Hope it's not a sign of my leadership that seems to be a little school hard to retire from.
Next up, Lori Maherian.
Excellent, yeah, well, that's the stuff is Lori Maherian, why I'm here. Lori is unable to be here tonight, but I'd still like to say a few words. Lori Maherian is the physical education teacher at East Aurora Middle School. She was hired in 1997 as 24 years of dedication to the students, parents, faculty, staff, and community members of East Aurora. When many students think of Miss Maherian, they think of, quote, "having a straight-up good time." That's what I ask.
That's what I asked a student yesterday, and that's what I got. She is known for a keen ability to provide them with fun games and challenges in physical edu- physical education. She loves to play, have the students play a great game of water polo on the swimming unit, and she really loves intramurals after school. Ms. Maherian has run our intramural program for as long as I can remember, and each year, students comment on how that is one of their favorite parts of the day. While we will certainly miss Lori in the halls of East Aurora Middle School, I'm excited for her in the upcoming years. She has a passion for traveling, whether it's, I have no idea how to pronounce this, but Canabong Cor, I believe, Maine, or clear-crossing the planet to her upcoming trip to Greece. We certainly will miss Ms. Maherian's outside voice even when she's inside. If you know her, you know what I mean. And the flip-flop of her flip-flops whenever the swimming unit is moving on at the middle school. And also the way that she decorates the locker room doors in her office based on whatever holiday it is. On behalf of East Aurora Middle School, I would like to wish Lori Maloney and her dogs Felon and Brody nothing but good health and happiness in her retirement. We're hoping that she stays in touch, but most importantly, that she enjoys her life and the visits of all the unique places around her. Lori Maherian.
Next, it's Jane Ross.
Jane Ross Harris, and for the last 14 years has been the clerk in the personnel office. And knowing that I have to speak about her tonight, unfortunately, she's not able to be here, decided not to make a fuss or bother or embarrass her. And while many of you know the most dangerous place in Western America between putting in a microphone, of the tremendous respect I have for her, I will keep this short. She spent six years in our tech department, 14 years in the personnel department, and in many cases was the first place, the first voice that many new hires saw. She was the welcome wagon, she was the ambassador. When folks wanted to join our team, it was her that received the email, the phone call, the paperwork. And she really set the tone for what it means to be part of our team and encouraging people to want our team. She navigated the very complex world of certifications and changing certifications, hiring and the amount of paperwork that goes into that, reference checks, and she'd be famous for doing reference checks, coming in and saying, you know, the references are good, but... And you know what? She was always right. She knew how to hear what was being said, and more importantly, what wasn't being said about people when we checked references. She helped me navigate some very, very delicate and sensitive situations where people had some very delicate and sensitive things going on in their lives in the personnel office who needed to respond in a way that supported the district and the individual. And I'll never forget the class of dignity with which she did it, always reminding that we've got to put the person first, and always a great reminder. She started off in tech way back in 2001. If you can imagine what the tech office was in 2001, I think that was before Google. So how they got anything done, I don't know, but even 20 years later, has done a tremendous job keeping current, modernizing, organizing, filing, recording things online, recording things online, and most importantly, keeping me somewhat pointed in the right direction each and every day. When I'd say, Jane, what do we have on the agenda today? Jane, what do you need me to do today? Whatever she told me to do, I did it, and that's the reason for my success. I've talked about her professional accomplishments, but I want to thank her, and this is the part that's going to embarrass you, Jane, if you're watching at home. Your friendship and your mentoring has been tremendous. I am a little suspicious that she told me that, you know, even though I'm retiring, I'm here for anything at all, just call, I'll stop by, I'll help you out. And I said, so what are your retirement plans? She said, I'm moving to Alaska. So, okay, well, I thought you were going to help me, but it's where her kids live and her grandkids live, and she wants to spend half the year with them. She is a true adventure seeker, she is truly an outdoors person. We'd come back in the weekends, and she decided just to get a cabinet of lectures for the weekend, just randomly, because she needed to be outdoors. She's learning exactly what it means to go on adventures, and I, as much as I feel I'm being left behind, I wish her nothing but the best on those adventures. She deserves each and every one of them. Thank you, Jane, for being awesome. Thank you, Jane, for being Jane.
Next is Candy Yobin.
That's how I don't want to go after Mark. Congratulations to all the retirees, and it is an honor for me to recognize Candy Yobin, who joined our staff September 4th of 1990, so 31 years ago. During her time with us as a wealth of knowledge and willingness to take on a challenge, she has taught everything from the math room, most recently landing and excelling as an extracurricular helper one and pre-calculus. Over the years, she has established a reputation for integrity and dependability second to none, and managed to make many friends along the way. Her colleagues described her as professional, passionate, and dedicated to teaching her students. She has spent countless hours with her students during planning periods before school, after school. There was always a student in her classroom. She has spent many hours each night, typically the last card in the parking lot, planning and preparing for her classes. Outside in the classroom, Candy attended countless dances, she was a peer mentor, a class advisor, and most recently even coached our shooting squad. If the students needed her participation and leadership, she was always there for them. Candy will be missed in education and has without a doubt earned her retirement. We thank her for her many years of service at East Aurora High School, and we hope that she will now find time to share with her husband and children, and we wish her the very best. It's an honor to recognize Candy Yobin.
Next up is Jackie Walker.
So Jackie's, Jackie's career in education started 42 years ago in Chicago Central as the senior library clerk, and also she ran the computer lab. And believe it or not, that's where I met Jackie, as a high school student. Our career together is long, 30 years plus, so it's, and it's been, it's been a great ride for sure. Jackie has served as the secretary to, believe it or not, eight superintendents. That was almost 90%, and certainly she deserves combat pay for putting up eight superintendents in the last 10 years that she has spent with me. She has also served as the district clerk since 96, and so that's a role that she serves for the board. That's why she's at every board meeting, and she coordinates all of this, all the documentation, all the backup, all the contracts, everything like that. This place couldn't run without Jackie, and we're not sure what we're going to do when she leaves on June 30th. But it has been a true pleasure to work with her for the last 10 years as superintendent. She has been beyond supportive and encouraging. Her historical knowledge is endless, and her support to me through many challenges that we've faced over the last 10 years has just been extraordinary. So it has been great, we've had a lot of laughs, and I'm going to miss her terribly. And so Jackie, congratulations, just an amazing career.
And finally, is Mary Beth Oberg.
Again, Mary Beth has sat on the board, as she mentioned earlier today, over the last 15 years, and she has served her role with great diligence, attention to detail, support for me, and most importantly, support for our students. It has really been an honor to be able to work with her. From a superintendent's position, the relationship with the Board of Education is absolutely critical, because together you forge the vision for the district, and I can't thank her enough for the support that she has provided to me. Again, her skill set really brought a sense of direction for the board and also for the district as a whole. She has been supportive of every administrator, our teaching staff, our support staff, and her colleagues that sit on board. Really just quite extraordinary, and again, today is a great day for celebration, but it is certainly bittersweet, because we say goodbye to so many wonderful people who have influenced so many children throughout their careers, and she has certainly had to talk with us, so, Beth, thank you.
So now, it is time to have some cake, so we'll get serving in. Please just bear with us for a moment.